Okay, good evening. Planning Board is now in session. It's Monday, April 11th, 7:00 PM pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. People who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so by finding the meeting at First item on the agenda is the Master Plan Committee update. Mrs. Latrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Master Plan Committee last met on April 6th. Looking at the final edits on the final chapters, we also received 100 or so pictures in our Master Plan Committee photo contests, and the committee is busy casting their votes now for their top 10 photos from each photographer. Next week I'll be meeting with Judith, and she has found somebody to do the final editing pro bono, so I'll be meeting, having a planning session with them. And we still hope to have something for town meeting in a joint Planning Board Select Board meeting the beginning of June. Hopefully, we will tie this up, and this will be one of the last few updates. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions or comments? Compliments?
Yeah, just a compliment.
Well done.
Yeah, Mimi, it was well put together. I spent some time with it over the weekend. It's amazing.
Are the pictures mostly like contemporary nowadays pictures, or are they a mix?
They're a mix. There are really some really nice pictures.
Some of the old Southborough pictures?
There may have been a couple, not too many old ones. Do you have any old pictures?
Well, they're all around, but I just didn't know if you were, if the master plan was focused on the world of today, or if it was going to be a blend.
I think there were a couple older pictures, but it's mostly contemporary.
Look forward to seeing it. Okay, we have a couple of public hearings. If I can move on to the next agenda items. We have, the next two public hearings are proponents have requested an extension, and I don't believe they're in attendance. So this is the public hearing is 325 Turnpike Road, Ken's Foods Expansion Major Site Plan Approval, continued from September 27th, October 18th, November 15th, December 13th, January 10th, January 24th, February 7th, February 28th, and March 14th. And the 325 Turnpike Road Ken's Foods Expansion Special Permit for Lower Impact Development, continued from those same dates. We have a request in writing from Ken's representative to continue the hearing from tonight to our next meeting, which is April 25th, 7:00 PM, and to grant an extension of the approval period to May 27th, 2022. So unless there's any questions or comments relative to this proposed action tonight, we'll entertain a motion to grant the extension of the approval period.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second in any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, we've extended the approval period, which allows us to continue the public hearing to April 25th at 7:05 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second in any discussion.
That's for both hearings, both the special permit and the major site plan.
That's the revised motion?
Yes.
And seconded.
Okay, sorry about that. Motion's been made in second in any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, we'll see them on the 25th. The next thing on the agenda, item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for 200 Turnpike Road, Snow Removal slash Landscaping Contractor Facility. It's a major site plan approval, and also a special permit for lower impact development. These hearings are continued from November 15th, January 10th, January 24th, February 7th, February 28th, and March 14th. If there's no questions or comments, we can entertain a motion to extend the approval period for both lower impact development permit, special permit, and the site plan approval. Extend that approval period to May 27th.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made in seconded to extend the approval period for both special permit and site plan approval. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. We now would entertain a motion to continue these public hearings to April 25th at 7:10 PM.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made in seconded in any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. Our next item on the agenda is a 7:15 public hearing. A continued public hearing. And my clock says it's 7:09, so we'll just wait a minute.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mills?
Can I make a motion? We approve the minutes from March 28th, 2022?
Second for discussion.
Motion's been made in second in any discussion. Mr. Stein?
Although I was not present, I did watch the meeting and reviewed the minutes, so I will vote.
Thank you. See, it's now 7:10, so we can continue with the approval of the minutes. Any other questions or comments on the meeting minutes of March 28th? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda at 7:10 is, sorry, 7:15? Oh, I got this all mixed up. We have another five minutes to go. So let's go to the Planner's Report if we can. You ready, Karina? Ready?
I am. If I can just see it. Just so you're aware, I put a copy of the current draft warrant in the Dropbox for everybody, and for reference, the Planning Board-sponsored articles are Article 27 and 28. And that's all about that. Bear with me. Advisory has asked for a joint meeting with Select Board and Planning Board on Wednesday, the 13th. And Colleen posted an agenda today for that joint meeting. I know that Mimi, Dawn, and Marnie indicated they were going to attend, so we took the safe route and posted an agenda. And that's also been sent to all the Planning Board members, so you're aware of that. I believe Colleen mentioned at the last meeting that town is researching returning to in-person meetings with a hybrid virtual approach. I believe they're still working on that. Nothing has been updated since then. The town is also, the Selectman's Office is also looking for people to be part of the Southborough 300-year anniversary, so there was a flyer that's posted, and that was sent out to everybody.
Outdoor dining applications.
Oh, yes, outdoor dining application. So I can't really read it. Colleen, do you know anything more specific about that? We just can't read it.
It just says the guidelines and application requirements.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't have to call it up. It's a new form. It's a new form that I think that people who are interested in maintaining the outdoor dining, right?
Yep, that's it.
If anyone has questions on that, you can call Planning Office, and we'll go into more detail. And just FYI, that Select Board are going to sign the warrant tomorrow evening at their meeting and intend to send it to the printers Wednesday morning. So any last changes we have from tonight, we can still incorporate tomorrow if needed and update the my purple, so we can get that in the final warrant. And that's all I have.
Any questions or comments on all of that?
Just got to say, Karina, you're a trooper. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. I just want to get it off the plate.
Feel better, Karina.
Thank you.
So we still have a couple of minutes. This afternoon, I received a phone call from Attorney Pizzoni regarding Ken's, and he only discussed with me, actually discussed what just happened, which is that no one from Ken's was going to show up, and that they had requested an extension. But he also asked if I could attend a, I think it's a Thursday night, this Thursday, at 7:30 at Ken's to meet with people from Ken's, and I think the neighbors, relative to the noise. And I suggested that it would be more productive if another member of the Planning Board attended that get-together rather than me. So you don't have to answer tonight, but if, I would hope that maybe one person, one or two, could get to the site. Yeah.
Unfortunately, I have a CPC meeting, and I cannot attend.
Dawn, can I just ask a quick question? You said neighbors were invited. Was there some sort of invitation that went out by email, or was this just a kind of conversation that you had with him that he's hoping to have neighbors go?
Somewhere in between. I'm not aware of any formal invitation, but he did say that some representatives from Ken's, say who? And people from the neighborhood. I did ask, is there going to be anybody there at the meeting that would be considered a sound engineer, a sound expert? And he said he didn't think that anyone like that would show up, but I think they're hoping for to benefit if there is the noise that people in the neighborhood are hearing, if they do hear it, and are able to, I guess, move around the site and to see maybe where it's coming from, or to see where it's the loudest, the receiving end of it. I just thought that that might be. We can get more details. I think the reason I'm bringing it up is to see if anybody has any interest and/or available at that time. You know, it's still light out at 7:30. And then I can get more details from Attorney Pizzoni. Go ahead, Marnie.
Sorry, Mimi, just want to clarify a question. So the first is my concern is that it's April vacation, and I already know of many families that are scheduled to leave, like the Thursday, Friday, so like, it worries me if the neighbors aren't going to be there, aren't going to be able to be there. And then, what time on Thursday?
When does April vacation start?
Well, Good Friday is Friday, so people will have that off, and then a lot of people are out Thursday.
And that's an early start to next week's April vacation. Okay.
So I wouldn't advise it if they can push it off when more people could come. And then again, my last question before Mimi comes in is just what time were they asking to do it?
I think it said 7:30.
Because I have a conflict. I just made arrangements for something that I can't back out of. But I would like to be there, so that's why I'd prefer to be there. Are they receptive to change the date, do you think, or do you think you should have a follow-up conversation?
I'll call Bill tomorrow and get more details. I
Kind of short notice.
At the time, I mean, it was a cold call from him, so I was in the middle of doing something else. At the time, I was more focused on trying to get information about the meeting, but also saying that I'm not going to be on the Planning Board much longer, and they should have somebody else. Go ahead, Mimi.
Two things. One, I have an ARPA meeting on Thursday night, so I can't go either. And the second thing is that the Board of Health Director has her hand raised, and she may be able to give more insight, because I know she was working with them also.
Wonderful. Go ahead, Heather.
Hi, it's Heather Algar, Health Director, Southborough, and I heard you talking about the Thursday meeting. We did pull together, I want to say in January and February, a meeting with Board of Health and with Ken's and with neighbors, okay? And then we asked Ken's for a meeting in April, a few weeks back, for our Board of Health, three elected members to go onsite at Ken's. So this is not for the public. This is for, I believe, two out of three of our board members can attend Thursday night, because we've been talking about this issue, and they haven't been onsite and seen the truck.
So
So I have a Board of Health meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
But I didn't, right, we didn't know. That's fine if folks from Planning Board want to come, but this is not a public. This is the Board of Health plus Ken's.
So no neighbors?
No, this wasn't, no.
Okay, I just got the impression that if I get invited, then that would probably mean there's a long list of people that are invited before me.
There you go. Yeah, I mean, as far as I know, we emailed them about a month ago asking for our Board of Health members to go onsite at Ken's. And we went back and forth, and this is where we got. They offered us Tuesday evening or Thursday evening of this week, and unfortunately, Tuesday evenings, one of our board members has another board meeting.
So this just basically boils down to, forget I brought it up.
There you go.
And good luck.
But you can come. Be happy to have you.
Thank you, but we'll leave it Board of Health and Ken's, and wish you luck. Well, it's now a little bit past 7:15, so we have a continued public hearing. 154-156 Northborough Road, modification to a major site plan approval. This public hearing is continued from March 14th. We'll ask the the town planner to bring us up to date.
Okay, as of the last meeting on March 14th, we have received, previously, we had ASBIL that were submitted by the proponent from 156 Northborough Road, prepared by Peter Bemis Engineering Design Consultants, and we provided that to Fosun O'Neill for review, at least for the civil site aspects, since the weather wasn't conducive until just recently for landscaping, which will be Phase 2 of the ASBIL review. We received some comments back from Fosun O'Neill, which I provided to the Planning Board and to Mr. Michael Quinn, Roger Kane, and Peter Bemis. We also provided the modification application to Town Council for review, which included the proposed language change to the conditions of approval from the prior permit, changing those to from a rental regime to a ownership approach, and along with that, also were condo documents that were provided. And we did receive feedback from Town Council that he didn't have a problem with changing, modifying the conditions of approval that related going from rental to occupant or ownership. And that, you know, and if the Planning Board members had additional conditions, that would be up to them. As far as the condo docs, they needed some work. So the feedback from Town Council was provided to the proponent. And then we did receive an extension request from the applicant as their deadline for approval approaches on April 24th, which is one day before the next Planning Board meeting. So just to take precaution, and we have a signed extension request from the applicant. And I did speak to the Building Commissioner, Laurie LaVole, and she indicated to me that they're still pending documentation for the building permit for the project. Various items. We also received one of the things I wanted to point out was that the part of the ASBIL review, the engineer-certified, the stormwater management system that wasn't completely built to the same size, it's my understanding, slightly varied due to certain site constraints, I assume. So there is the potential that we request a copy of the stormwater calc that the ASBIL engineer indicated that he ran in order to confirm that the way that the system was built meets the intent of the approved prior plans, and they've been made aware of that, the engineer has. And that brings us to this evening, and again, this is the modification to the major site plan approval that was approved back in 2018. All right, that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is anyone from Northborough Road here tonight?
I see Mr. Michael Quinn. He's in the audience. We have a hand raised. David Officer?
Yeah. I'm an attorney. I represent the owner.
Hello, David.
Hey, Dawn. It's nice to see you.
Good to be seen. Good to see you. I saw you the other day. It was nice talking with you. Go ahead, David.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Quinn.
Okay. Mr. Quinn.
Mike, you're muted.
How's that sound?
Welcome back.
I expected our engineer to be present tonight, Peter Bemis. Is he on the Zoom call at all?
I don't see him.
Okay. So I guess tonight, we're looking forward, we're looking to move forward with the modification that goes from tenant landlord to occupant-owner.
Just, did you receive my email regarding Town Council's feedback?
I did.
So you had to review that.
Yeah, so I did see that, and I forwarded the information to our attorney and asked him to make some adjustments to the document, so they're not so I think the word was sloppy. And I asked them to contact the Town Council to find out what he meant by that word, A, and B, what was sloppy about them. I know it's a draft. I know there were a couple of small changes, just small corrections, but other than that, I don't get why, you know, he put the label on there. It's, I wish he was more specific, then we could be more specific.
I believe some of the things, and they can still be clarified, had to do with certain things not being referenced in the condo docs as well as
Yeah.
The modification permit will have to be included. The protocol will have to be included. I also want to point out that the protocol that you provided as proposed still references tenants in the header of the document. And there were some concerns from the Building Department as well in regards to the 30-day timeframe that was in the protocol. Somebody would move into a unit, and then after 30, you know, within 30 days, they're already in, and then you know, the protocol would have to be addressed. So there was a little bit of concern with having that 30-day in there as opposed to prior to moving in.
Yeah, I believe we were just trying to mirror the previous protocol.
Right, so there is some cleanup work to be done on the condo doc, so we're hoping that you can get those revisions back to us, so that we can send them back to Town Council.
Yeah, we should have them to in a couple of days.
Karina, let's go back to the 30-day thing.
Okay.
At the time, in, what was it, 2018?
Yes.
The Planning Board was looking at rentals, and there was great concern about the tenants coming and going. And the potential for things happening there that were either hazardous, potential hazards, or conflicting operations. So we went with that 30-day piece of the agreement. But the current building inspector, and I think she may be right, the 30-day piece tends to drift over into the building inspectors the way they operate. So I believe she's suggesting that we delete the reference to 30 days. And that would have the Planning Board less involved in that transition period. So if you can live with that, then moving forward, when you're cleaning up the rest of the document, then you can leave it out and submit that and see if, and Karina can run that by the building inspector to see if that's an improvement relative to her jurisdiction over a tenant-occupied, single building. A tenant occupied single building.
Okay. I think we can do that.
And then, oh, Don, can I just ask, Dave, um, Attorney David Officer, he is representing the. One fifty-six North Row Road, is that what I understood?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um. There, I thought in our previous discussions, we were focused on uh, the condo documents. And uh, the simple change from rental to condo. Because you indicated that the building is ready to go. And since then, the town planner and the building inspector have discussed. What seems to be some open items relative to the building ready to go. So we've got the building, we've got the condo docs, and then we've got the landscaping. All three, and I think uh, at the previous meeting or meeting, meetings that we've had. You felt that uh, the planning board could make this. Can approve the modification to condos. With the uh. With your assurance that you'd take care of the landscaping when the, the weather was allowing that. So, we can't do the condo docs tonight. Uh, we still have to get clarity, clarity from. The building inspector relative to the so-called open items. And now we're in uh, the springtime, so it would seem that the uh, plantings. If this is the appropriate time of the year to get going on that, that you could do that also. I don't know if there's anyone more uh, wanting to wrap this up than the planning board. We just, we can't do it at this point because of these open items. Can you speak to the plantings?
Uh, they're, they're in the process of being ordered. Uh, as I've stated before, we, we placed many of them last fall with native species. And we have a few more to go.
And then you'd be ready for an inspection of that?
That's correct.
Soon as that approaches or is, is ready, um, we'd invite you to contact Karina. And she could arrange for that inspection and get that item behind us.
Great. Looking forward to it.
Open up to the planning board, any questions or comments, um, Mr. Mills?
On, I think, Don, you summarized everything perfectly, uh, where I'm, you know, my concerns and everything, so. I have no questions, thank you.
Don, can I just say one thing before the planning board members continue, because this is important to know? I don't know if you had a chance to review the Fussin O'Neil comments on the as-built. Um, so there are some um, items in there that would also need to be addressed. And explained, um, and confirmed locations of hydrant. There are some light poles that were um. Along, along the edge of the rear parking area that do not appear to have been installed. I mean, sometimes that's a good thing, but if it's, you know, per the approved site plan, there are some issues within the. Um, as-built uh, follow-up review from Fussin O'Neil that um, the. Applicant should probably meet with me to go over them as well. In order to address those.
Yeah, I, I'm looking forward to that, Karina. Obviously, I can see your condition, so maybe towards the end of this week or the beginning, and next week we'll have a meeting.
Yeah, that would be good.
Great.
Then you could provide a response letter and, you know, to those comments and um. Describe how you're going to remedy them, or that you will be remedying them and, and actually taking that action.
Yes, agreed.
We can understand why you would want to have a inspector who can only see out of one eye. We'll leave that up to Karina when she's ready, uh, and you, you tell her that you're, you're ready.
Okay.
Back to uh, Mr. Mills, you all said, there's four items now, landscaping. Building inspector. The um, as-bills. And the um. Condo, condo docs. Mr. Stein.
Fortunately, Karina's condition is temporary. I look forward to her recovery. Uh, at the last hearing on this agenda item, uh, my position was I would uh. Consider, you know, voting. If the only outstanding item was the landscaping. It seems like, you know, we're in the exact same situation, more or less. And so it continues, thanks.
Mrs. Latrell.
Yes, thank you, I, I think you did a nice job summarizing, Mr. Chairman, seemed to be a, a lot of balls up in the air still, and I would like. A lot more clarified before we move on, thanks.
Mrs. Holley.
My other board members have covered it, thank you.
Anyone else out there? Questions, comments? David, Michael?
No, I look forward to our next meeting um, with resolution to a lot of these open-ended items.
I'm sorry, Michael.
I'm looking forward to uh, our next meeting to resolve these outstanding issues.
I agree.
So the next thing to uh, address would be the request for an, an, an extension of the approval period, is that right, Karina?
Correct.
Can we get that on the screen? Oh, Colleen's always ahead of us. And this would uh. Allow, this would can, uh, extend the approval period to May twenty-seventh. I don't see anybody signing that, though.
I did send a, a signed copy to Colleen earlier today.
Okay. Did you get that, Colleen? Do you remember getting that?
Uh, I did get something from him, yes.
Take you what you were, that you signed it, so uh, the first thing, any questions or comments, otherwise. Well, entertain a motion to um. Extend the approval period to May twenty-seventh.
So moved.
Second.
This is made in second, and any discussion? Hearing on all in favor of Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yeah?
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, now um, we can uh, continue this public hearing to April twenty-fifth at seven fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
Well, this has been made in second, and any discussion? Hearing on all in favor of Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yeah?
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, we'll see you on the twenty-fifth.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a uh, public hearing, continued public hearing. For a proposed warrant article to add a section to chapter one fifty-three. Trees for a tree bylaw, this is continued from March twenty-eighth. Shall we go to the town planner, or should we go to Mrs. Latrell?
Just want to note for the record, I'm, I'm not sure, um, Jesse did indicate he did the Mullins forms for both of these. Um, public hearings for the warrant articles. From the twenty-eighth. Okay. Sorry.
Mrs. Latrell.
Thank you, um. Yesterday I received it, um. An in-depth review from Selectman Dennington, who was kind enough to go through the whole bylaw. And wondered if the board wanted to uh, review his comments. And I think, I think you have the, that document, Colleen, don't you?
I uh, I discussed this this afternoon with uh, Karina, and it would seem. Uh, very appropriate, if you're willing to do it and can speak to them, uh, you've already gone over them, Mimi, so um. I would suggest that we do that, they're not, uh, it's not, it's more than just a little handful, but I think we could manage it. In, in the next little bit of time here. Let's ask the rest, the rest of the board, do we want to go through this?
Yes, please.
Okay, you're on, uh, Mimi. Is Andrew uh, with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
No, Andrew Dennington. You're always here.
He's, no, he's not in the attendees.
Alright.
So the first um. Issue that he commented on was the uh, definition of public shade tree. There um. There's been a lot of confusion about that. Uh, twenty feet. And he had suggested um. An alternate definition that may clear that up. Which would say a public shade tree is, is A, any tree within or on the boundaries of a public right-of-way, including scenic roads. Except for a state highway, or B, a tree that is not within or on the. Boundaries of a public right-of-way, but previously has been planted by the tree warden upon adjoining land at a distance not exceeding twenty feet. From the layout of such a public way, with written consent of the owner of such adjoining land. And I would. I think that, my opinion is that's pretty good and seems pretty clear, except for I would take out the previously. Previously has been planted, and just put planted, so there's no. Confusion about that. And what's the opinion of the board on that?
I'm fine, that looks good, I agree, that seems redundant, planted is past tense and previous is past, past tense, so. We good?
So keep that uh, definition?
Yes.
But remove, remove previously? Okay. And then he commented, he was questioning um, if a high, if the second half of the definition, if a highway. Boundaries are unclear because of the boundaries between public and private land cannot be made certain by land records, monuments, the trees. The tree is presumed to be a public shade tree according to chapter eighty-seven, section one, and he was asking if. Highways are town roads, and I believe when we um, met. With town council and Karina and Don, you were there, that he said that the reference to highway there was referring to town roads.
I, I remember that.
Yeah, okay. So that we can just uh, just leave.
Was, what, did that discussion also include the word byways? I think somewhere in, in, in this state language. They also use the word byways. Might not be this part of eighty-seven, but.
I don't remember that in eighty-seven, but probably, because a lot of state law goes back to the beginning of time, that seems like a popular. Old-timey word. So the next uh, comments were. Under the responsibilities of the tree warden, I think, or my. Yeah, so he, up, yeah, there, up, down. Under four, and then A, B, C, D. There you go, he added uh, instead of just trees, planting new trees, planting. Trees for safety and health, he added the public shade tree to each one of those. Each one of those sections. And I don't know if that's necessary, because the tree warden has authority over public shade trees. But I don't know if it hurts to be more explicit, except if. Except if we, you know, expand this to include town trees or other trees that aren't in the. In the public right-of-way.
Would those trees be in a park or cemetery?
Town trees, yeah. But they wouldn't be public shade trees.
Mimi, since we've changed the definition upfront of a public shade tree, with more clarity that he's added that, does that? I know he's asking the question here, but does that resolve what we were trying to do? Because isn't it? Both? It's an any tree within or on the boundaries of a public right-of-way?
Or, or public shade trees, yes.
Yeah. Oh, so, oh, but this is just for trees, a public tree planting.
So by saying public shade tree. You're excluding the trees in parks and cemeteries and.
Yep.
Schools. Schoolyards. Do you know if that's his intention?
Um, I just received this from him last night, and I didn't have a chance to um, discuss it with him. But that was my thought. That the, that it would restrict. The ability to. Plant or care for trees on town property, if this, these um. Responsibilities were all changed to be specific to public shade trees.
And then would the document be silent relative to the trees that aren't on? Roadways?
So, I just, if I get to interject for a second, it does say, in purpose. A, to, that the purpose of the bylaw is to reserve and protect the town's public shade trees. So if that is the intent to, to, to make this bylaw specific to public shade trees. That would make sense.
Which I guess would be okay, but if. If it excludes the, the trees that are in parks, cemeteries and school grounds, or other. Other places where the town owns the land, but it's not on a road, who would be responsible for those trees?
Mimi, was it your intention to make, to, to narrow the focus of the bylaw? That way?
Um, so the intention was to follow chapter eighty-seven in uh. Chapter forty, fifteen C, which only deal with public shade trees.
Got it, thank you. So we're there. Alright.
So just leave those as public shade trees?
Could you somewhere put an add-on paragraph, or maybe a statement that says um, these. The, these things will also apply to um, public trees in other areas of town-owned property? Could it be that simple? It would be beyond chapter eighty-seven in a sense, but this is a local. It would be beyond chapter 87 in a sense, but this is a local bylaw that you could maybe add a statement like that? If that's the intent? With a, for example, cemeteries, et cetera. Parks owned by the town. Schools.
So we do have a cemetery department. Do they do trees in cemeteries?
It's my understanding that was tree warden.
The cemetery department is, not sure if it's still called that, but it was absorbed by the DPW years ago.
Right, but it's still, it's, it's still, it's still listed as a department under the DPW. So the, in the different iterations of this bylaw, we had, we grew it and we had like a tree board and we were dealing with more than just public shade trees. And then we trimmed it back so it just followed chapter 87 in chapter 40, 15c to only deal with public shade trees.
Do you feel that that's the way to go at this point? Keep it simple?
I think so, yeah. I don't know if we necessarily need all of these because the, because the jurisdiction that the tree warden has under this bylaw is to care for public shade trees. I don't know if we need, I don't know if it's redundant to have it listed here every single time. But I don't know, I don't know if it hurts either.
I don't think it is because it, it, I mean, it's, in the definitions, it lists what a public shade tree is. So, and the, the purpose says it's for public shade trees. So to me, I think Mr. Dennington is correct.
Okay, so to leave the, to leave these as he has edited them?
Yeah, minimizes the ambiguity, if there is any.
What about J? Is that, I mean, planting is deleted?
I don't, what, what does his con- So I think that for the purposes of this bylaw right now, it's just for planting trees within the public right of way.
Well, is he questioning the action verb planting? Or is he questioning where the plantings? Is the word planting okay? Is that what you intended to leave there?
Yes, yes. He's asking whether it's both town trees and public shade trees. But the planting within this bylaw just deals with public shade trees.
Who just typed that in there?
Colleen.
And you're okay with that? Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Well, just a question, if you, why can't you, if, if, if money is being added to this tree fund, it can only be used for public shade trees? It can't be used for town property trees? Right? So if you have expenditure funds for public tree planting and maintenance consistent with, oh, because it says consistent with the bylaw, that kind of mixes it again. And then you'd also have to consider how it reflects in the revolving fund at the end. That language as well.
Yeah, and there's a whole section on planting trees and it, it only relates to public shade trees. So are we good with that one?
Yep.
The next thing is L. So this, he added all regulations, fees and fines subject to approval of the select board. This I have an issue with because if the tree warden creates regulations and they're approved by the select board, it's considered a bylaw. So we would have competing bylaws, which just makes things confusing. And we tried to go the regulation route and it didn't work. So now we're doing a bylaw. So I don't think they've, the regulation should be approved by the select board.
And that's where we agreed, we'd have kind of like a rules and reg document where fines and all that stuff could be done offline from a bylaw perspective.
Right.
So is he just suggesting that well, that the person would report in through DPW? So fines and everything would be through whatever process that we go through now. Is that right? To get fines approved? Or we can write it in the rules and regulations that way? Because I, I would agree with you, Mimi. I think this, this makes it a little bit more challenging. That's why we eliminated that type of language in the other draft.
Right.
So I would vote to not include his amendment.
Okay.
It would be nice to know if he intends to make an amendment and sort of override that at town meeting. Maybe, I mean, do you have a sense of whether or not he's gonna, if we don't go along with this, if he's gonna make spot amendments himself on the town meeting floor?
I don't know, but we'll see him on Wednesday at the joint select and advisory meeting. I can ask him that.
Thanks.
But, but the way chapter 87 is written, that if the tree warden creates rules and regulations, they're approved by the select board, it has the power of a bylaw. So I don't know where it, so then we have two bylaws. It doesn't make any sense to me, but, so I'll ask him that on Wednesday. So do, do we agree to take that edit out for the?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then under jurisdiction, I think he was questioning the inclusion of, in conjunction with the planning board. So my feeling on this is that since the majority of roads in Southborough are already scenic roads, that the tree warden should be working in conjunction with the planning board. Is there any other opinion on that?
Well, as applicable, if the, if he's working on a road that's not a scenic road, then in conjunction with the planning board doesn't apply. But if it's a scenic road, then it does.
So I think, I think it's sort of healthy for the planning board to make that determination. So I kind of like it the way it is.
It, it does no harm. And it reminds the reader that the planning board is part of this, especially if it's a scenic road.
Right, yeah. I, I liked it the way it was, that it promotes interdepartmental collaboration and cooperation. And then under four, he added, either the town planner or the planning board. So if it's a something that can be answered quickly, it doesn't have to wait till there's a planning board meeting. He can call the planner. And I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that as well.
That's an improvement.
Yeah. So then the next was the permit required for construction or demolition activities within the drip line of a public shade tree. And he recommended removing that because he said construction isn't defined and it could be putting in a mailbox. But my opinion is I don't think anyone would consider putting in a mailbox construction. And if you're doing construction or demolition within the drip line of a tree, you may kill that, that public shade tree. And the reason for the permit is for the tree warden to help mitigate that in some way. Or if you put, or if you call, because you're putting in a mailbox, he'll say, you know, that shouldn't be any harm and you don't need, you don't need my permission for that. So I would, I would keep that as is unless the board feels differently about that.
I think maybe if he could opine on that, maybe Wednesday, just what he means, like, I would agree with you. I think generally, a person, a layperson reading this versus an attorney reading this would go your route, but I think maybe just to have the conversation. But I tend to agree with you, Mimi.
You could also add a definition for construction or demolition activities.
Well, in chapter 87, Mimi, I don't have it in front of me, but don't they use the term construction and demolition in that state language? Without defining it?
I believe so, yes.
This should be just limited to the trees. Those, you know, the trees can grow quite large. So can some bushes and flowers and things, but I mean, everybody has, almost everybody has some kind of landscaping in the right of way between their front property line and the pavement.
So aren't we talking about trees? Where are we now?
His question asked about flowers and shrubs.
Oh, no, we're just dealing with trees.
Just trees.
Yeah. Oh, did it originally not say public shade tree? Is that why he's?
Previously, it just said on public property. So I think he's saying one or more trees within a public right of way. And I don't know if you need to, um, he's questioning if all work needs to be defined, but I think it's subject to the following, specific about permission for planting one or more trees is subject to these conditions. So I don't think, like, he asked, should all work be defined? I don't think so. I think you could just say all work in a public right of way.
Right.
Yeah, because it's all pertaining to planting the trees. So I, I'm, I'm fine. I'm actually fine with his suggestions of adding grant to petitioner and planting one or more trees within public right of way.
Yes, I agree.
So you just delete his comments, but accept his, accept his edits. The point of Mimi, he has public right of way. It's all capitalized, so that just needs to be uncapitalized unless do we have public right of way capitalized throughout the document? I see it above, in the paragraph above, under E1. But I guess the question is just consistency formatting.
Oh, yeah, I don't think it is capitalized. I'll have to go through and look.
Yeah, maybe just highlight that, Colleen, like, just put it in yellow, maybe.
In the definition, just public is capitalized. If that makes a difference. There's a definition. Public right of way.
Then you'll have to just go find replace.
So you just want the word public capitalized?
I don't, I think that's capitalized because it's the first word of the sentence there. I don't think it is, but I'll go through and look. So it should, it should just be all the same. But I don't think it is.
Right, because in the first paragraph too, in the first line, it's public right of way is capitalized. And then it goes back to the third line. It says public right of, rights of way is not right there.
Look at that.
Okay.
And I'm fine with this next clarifying, edit all costs incurred. And so the, is everyone okay with that in the course of the planting the trees?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
I'm good.
Part D though, Mimi, he asks, his question is, he, or states, this is way too vague. The petitioner shall execute a release in the favor of the town.
So I think town council looked at that and was okay with it. I mean, that's a legal thing that's beyond my
Interesting. Yeah, maybe Wednesday night. We just ask. Because he recommends just removing that. But you're saying our town council inserted it?
Well, I think it was there in
Part of the law.
He was okay with it. I'll have to double check his, too. So that's a question. And then the next one is G1.
Sorry, Mimi, just to go back, I'm looking at town council's red line the previous sentence there.
The release?
Yeah, that was E2D. E2D.
Yeah.
In town council's red line, E2D, let me just make sure I'm looking at it. His red line, he actually added that that D, he added that phrase under D. That was from town council. He actually added that in, I believe.
Okay.
So we have
competing attorneys. Who would have ever thought?
So for now, leave that in there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So on to G1, applications for permits. He added the clarifying language for public shade tree pruning or removal, which I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Anyone else okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Where's the next? So J1?
Five.
I think those are just comments, right?
H5.
Meeting?
Yeah, they're little, they're little dumb.
Typos?
Typos, yeah. The next is H5. Nonhazardous public shade tree.
Yeah, I don't know what to do with this one. So he's looking for a definition of nonhazardous. And he says, does nonhazardous mean any tree that does not pose an imminent hazard?
Your research didn't find another town took care of this, Mimi?
Well, so this, all of this is from other towns.
So other towns are using that term nonhazardous?
Yeah.
At least one other town is.
So then, I mean, I don't know, my feeling is if it's unsightly or ugly and they just don't like it and it doesn't meet the other reasons why a tree warden would take it down and it goes to a tree hearing.
Go away.
I mean, I feel like that should be on the whoever petitions for this to go to tree hearing. If they want it removed and they're willing to invest in it, maybe it's made very clear to them. But if it's not an imminent hazard or poses threats, I understand his point. I can see cases where the town should pay for it, but I kind of liked the way it was written.
Yeah. Yeah, I was fine with the way that it was written. And then that would be, you know, the call would be the tree warden in consultation with the planning board.
And they can always appeal the decision, right?
Correct.
There's always an appeal.
So I personally am fine with, I understand his points, but I think it's fine. I think unless the tree warden deems it required to come down, then it shouldn't be on the town's dime to remove it.
Right.
So we're going to leave the word tree in there, public shade tree to clarify? And then leave the phrase as is? Leave that item as is?
Leave it as it's, yeah.
Yep. Just resolve the comment. Just a comment to us. He might want to bring it up on Wednesday.
And just so you know, it's our intent to make these changes tomorrow to at least get the ones where I'll agree, you're agreed to, to get into the warrant.
Yeah.
Oh, right, yep.
Okay.
All right, what's the next one?
Defining private purpose. I think that's the same reason that's nonhazardous tree, right? That's a private purpose.
Yeah.
I don't think it has to be defined, but that's, I was fine with it as originally written.
Yeah, I don't either.
And the last is enforcement M.
So I think that's language from like zoning fines, I think, or
I think you're right. His point's valid.
Yeah.
So I would agree that you just delete that last sentence from each to offense. Oh, boy. That's a big question.
So M2 is going to be just that one sentence, the second sentence in that M2 is going to be deleted, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think we know the impact of Andrew's suggestion about the tree warden's compensation. I think we'd have to get details from DPW as to what those numbers are and what what other tasks the tree warden does other than what we described here. I suppose it's possible, but probably take it one step at a time. If it's
Yeah, I don't know, it would take a while before the tree fund had enough money to pay a salary. And that would kind of defeat the purpose. We wouldn't be able to plant any trees until we had enough money in the fund to pay a salary.
Which may never happen.
Right. So my question on this, I found a bylaw in Concord that within the bylaw, they created a tree fund. And because there's been so much conversation of whether this can be done and can we edit another bylaw and to put in this revolving fund, I was wondering if we could within the bylaw, create a tree fund and then at a subsequent meeting, edit the revolving fund table and do the spending limits? Or does it have to be done upfront when you create the fund?
Well, that's the question. If you, the feedback from town council was I think he leaned towards separate articles, but he said it's feasible to do it in one as well. But that was he didn't elaborate more on that. And in taking this, in putting together this A, B, C, D, E, F, G, I looked at the table of the other revolving funds and it seemed to be consistent that salaries and wages of full-time employees shall not be paid from the annual budget. I think the majority of the other, there may only be one exception to that for some special reason. But most of them had that under Part E. If I'm not mistaken.
I would err with leaving it in. And then if we have to provide a amendment on the town floor, but just leaving it as it's written.
I agree.
And then try to figure out the answers between now and town meeting. That's great feedback from Mr. Dennington.
Yeah, I really appreciated that he went through the whole bylaw line by line. It's very helpful.
We're good. Open it up to the public, the planning board. Any questions or comments?
No questions.
Anyone from the public? All set, Mimi, for tonight, everybody?
All set.
This is pretty much what we envisioned is getting a quality first, second, 10th draft ready for a public hearing. And this is our second public hearing, giving people an opportunity to read it and comment which we have at our last hearing and again tonight. This is how the process works well when people spend the time during the hearing and don't wait until it's on the town meeting floor to ask, can always ask questions and make amendments, but it seems that sometimes we get that and realize that what proponents are trying to do at town meeting could have been done during the public hearing.
I have one more thing I forgot.
Go ahead.
The Select Board, so Lisa, the Select Board Chair, put together a temporary process for tree removals in place until this bylaws passed. And there's been a lot of discussion on whether it will be passed at the annual town meeting or if we run out of time, it may have to be postponed to the fall. So she put a interim process in place and the Select Board voted to accept it at their last meeting. So it requires hearings for removing trees.
Where did that come from?
Where did it come from? Lisa, she sent it to me and I looked at it and it's from our previous policy that we tried to put together.
That's what I thought. So your work prior to this has had some effect, at least temporarily.
Well, it got us working on a bylaw.
Yeah.
So there is some process in place, which from what I can tell, there hasn't been one to this date. So that's a positive thing.
Anything else? If not, we'll move on to the next agenda item. But we first have to continue this public hearing to our next meeting, which is April 25.
So move.
Circle. And that, would that be at 7:20 PM?
Yes.
Yes, Karina?
Yes, 7:20.
So the motion is the motion is to continue the public hearing for a warrant article to add a section to chapter 153 Trees to April 25 at 7:20. Is that the motion?
That's the motion. So move.
And seconded. All right, any questions or comments? Can I bring that all in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell? Houlihan, yes?
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing to propose warrant article for scenic roads continued from March 28. Any news on movement or questions, comments, news from that you've heard, Karina?
Yes, we sent an email to Conservation Agent Ms. Lissa Danza, asking her to query with the Conservation Commission as to their current interest may not be the right word, but perhaps wanting to co-sponsor this warrant article for scenic roads, seeing how they were the sponsors in the previous years for the warrant articles to make scenic roads. And the feedback was that it's not that they're not in support of the article, but they haven't really been fully involved in the article itself. So they didn't want to rush it and and felt it was, they weren't comfortable at this point to take a position to actually co-sponsor, but that doesn't mean that they were necessarily against. But that doesn't mean that they were necessarily against. That just means they weren't ready to co-sponsor something that they hadn't vetted to the level they wanted to vet it.
Very good. And the, the rule says, the state says that the scenic roads, it's Planning Board, Conservation Commission, or
Yeah.
Doesn't say and, so any one of the three can bring this forward. And in this case, it was the Planning Board. I did hear, was that all, Karina?
Yes.
I did hear, I think that, I think it was Mr. Dennington was wondering why we're wanting to designate all the public roads in town as scenic. And it's a good question. I think there's at least one other town that we researched that's done that. And some towns have very, very few scenic roads. It would seem to me that if we designate all of the roads as what we're proposing, there's no harm in that. And there's great benefit. To do it otherwise and select certain roads without a formal criteria, which the state law does not have, we would have to create a criteria, adopt one that would guide us toward designating one road over another as scenic. In the absence of that, again, the town of Southborough has once before designated all of the public ways as scenic. And as I said, not aware of any harm in doing that. And it provides additional protection for those roads. It's, I guess if I was a tree and I was on a scenic road, I'd feel better than maybe another tree friend of mine who might be living on a non-scenic road. And having that tree be concerned about the that same level of protection. So other than that, I also have heard informally, I guess, that there's a suggestion or an idea to bump this article along with the tree article to another town meeting. And I think what I would recommend to the board is that we allow these to be printed in the warrant. Allow them to go to the town meeting floor and see how it goes. If there's time to hear them, then let's do it. Let's get it done. And if there isn't, there should be a discussion, not just about these two articles, but others that we may not have time to process in just two nights. So again, doesn't seem to be any harm in keeping it in the warrant and hoping that we can efficiently get through all of them. I haven't heard any more about consent. There was some discussion about articles being passed by consent, which I think the town moderator may have indicated at one point as a way of you know, saving time. Open up to the board. Any questions or comments?
No questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Karina.
One thing I want to remind the members that we can draft a short report from the Planning Board to town meeting for, at the time when you close the public hearings for these, just to ensure that if they don't go through that, there's no confusion that they can be brought to the next town meeting if the Planning Board supports their warrant articles, like we've done in the past.
So we would have that report prepared and ready for voting if necessary.
Correct.
Well, these aren't zoning, so I don't think that there's that gap like there is with zoning.
Well, that's true too. These are, this is a general bylaw and the other is a warrant article. So that maybe, that's right, Mimi. In the past, they were zoning amendments.
Have you heard anything about a dry run? Practice town meeting to go through these. I know Mr. Semino sometimes, or all the time, has so that he understands who to call on, who to expect to speak to each article. We haven't gotten to that point yet, I guess.
I haven't heard.
I think once they sign the warrant, then they go into that phase.
Sure. Any questions or comments from the public on the scenic road warrant article? If not, we'll move on to the next item on the, oh, we will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for the scenic roads to April 25 at 7:25 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Patrol, yes.
Hulahan, yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item, MBTA Communities. Karina, what you went over with me this afternoon, I would think would help the public and the board understand where we are with this.
Okay, so just to catch up that the deadline for March 31 and the comment letter to the DHCD, the state in, on the guidance documents. There was a lot of pushback and all kinds of workshops on that. So I received an informational email indicating that the the next deadline for MBTA Communities is to submit the MBTA Community Information Form by May 2, 2022. And the second requirement is hold a briefing of your Select Board on the draft compliance guidance no later than May 2 and attest to that on the MBTA Community Information Form. So I've been asked by EDC Coordinator, you know, who's who's taking the charge for this? Who's, who's the, who's the who's the lead on this? And I said that we would be discussing this, we have it on our agenda to come to terms with that. And I think there was, forgive me, Don, but you mentioned two things. We discussed two things earlier. And one was that, that we have this, the town has this deadline in order to remain in compliance while the DHCD is finalizing these guidelines. And those are those two things, this form by May 2 and Select Board have to hold a meeting and attest to that on this information form. So it would lead me to believe that at this point, this should kind of fall within the Select Board's lap to take on these two tasks because it refers specifically to them in the information. So I have copied, actually I forwarded this information as well as other information on the status of the MBTA Communities to Mark Purple, the Select Board Chair, Lisa Brascio, as well as the Planning Board members so that they stay informed as to this topic. So they should be aware of this requirement. Also, you know, town council had several months ago provided an advisory to the Select Board as well. And we had received that too. So I guess I'm just looking for consensus that from the Planning Board's perspective, that should be the approach.
Go ahead, Marty.
Just a point of clarity. So I know as a community, like the Select Board, Mimi helped write the letter. So we've written a letter that says, you know, we basically don't think we're subject to a lot of this stuff. So we, I guess, is there any FAQs by the state around? If you've basically suggested that we can't comply, like why you'd still need to go through all of these things? It just kind of.
Well, you don't need to. What happens is that if you don't provide an MBTA community zone as outlined by the DHCD's criteria, that then you're not, you can't take advantage of the funding.
Right. There's three or four funding sources that we get either shut off from or reduced if we don't participate. It's the usual, you know, when the state asks the towns to do something, if you don't do it, then you you risk getting less state funding or grants.
And one of them happens to be the one-stop application that the EDC is working on. And I believe I forwarded Planning Board members, you may not have a chance to see it, it was pretty late this afternoon. Mark Purple had put out a letter about that grant application that the EDC is pursuing again, or the Select Board is pursuing through the EDC to the, about $40,000, $45,000 for the Route 9 wastewater study. So you know, that's, we talk about it and we put the information out there, but there's, there is no clear jurisdiction yet as to who will be taking kind of the lead. And you know, the Planning Board should absolutely be involved in Planning Department. But you know, in these early stages, I think some of these initial tasks have to be decided or the Select Board has to have consensus that this is what the town wants to pursue and and take that action.
Right. They signed the last, the last letter, what, week or 10 days ago, two weeks ago? I would think that it's expected that they would take the lead on this. But that letter was a great group effort, Conservation, Planning, Selectmen, Select Board. Maybe a few others participated. Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Mimi.
So I know this information form requires you to lay out a zone. Are we held to that? It doesn't make any sense that we're saying that we can't comply with the guidelines. We submitted the letter saying that by the deadline, but yet they still want us to move ahead by May 2 and create a zone that we can't create? And I would say that I would think it would be a collaborative effort with the Planning Board and the Select Board because it's a zoning issue. They're just, you have to create a zoning district or an overlay. So if we fill out this information sheet and we just plop down an overlay anywhere, are we held to that? Because if they revise the guidelines and say, oh, it doesn't have to be a half mile, you can put it somewhere else. It doesn't need to be this size. Can we change it?
It's a little bit the tail wagging the dog because if you do that, then what's the purpose of making the modifications from the state's point of view to the guideline? So.
Right.
But there has to be some kind of a decision at, at the Select Board with Planning Board feedback, I would imagine, on to even move forward with this approach. Or to simply say, you know, we're not going to do this and therefore we won't be anticipating these funding avenues. But it's the Select Board that's looking for, using the one-stop grant program for their study along Route 9. And you know, whether they get that or not, that's one thing, but they're applying for it. So I'm just not sure where to, you know, how to proceed. We don't want to let it go by if the Select Board feels it's an important thing and the Planning Board thinks it's important, but.
But how do we move forward without updated guidelines? And it's my understanding that, that the state fully expects to change the guidelines.
Right. Then the approach could be to simply sit and hold. But then you don't have interim compliance. So it's really odd that, you know, they make these deadlines, but it's kind of up in the air. Like what is really going to be the document that the towns have to follow to meet this? So, you know, and even in that sense, that's another decision that has to be made. Does the town want to just sit on this until the DHCD comes to terms with the pushback that they've received? So, you know, it's all really valid, but there has to be a somewhat of a consensus, I guess, on what to do. Sit tight and wait for the changes or, you know, I haven't fully investigated the form yet. So as you say, if it says laying out a zone, you know, that's not always such an easy task either. A cursory, you do it now, could impact you later.
Right. Well, especially if we lay it out going by the current guidelines and then they change them, are we stuck?
No.
Doing something we can't really do?
Yeah. And it has to pass town meeting anyway. You know what I mean? It's a zoning amendment. So in the end, the town could possibly vote not to accept that zoning change. And with the caveat, knowing that they would not be able to take advantage of those particular grant strategies.
So from what we're hearing then is a willingness to participate in the process and at the same time, share with the Selectmen, Select Board our maybe, maybe not confusion, or maybe it is confusion, but our concern about open items and potential conflicting actions. If we, if we follow the current rule, even though it conflicts with our letter, it says that we can't. If the board is okay with that, then we'd probably ask the town planner or a Planning Board member to pass that on to the Select Board.
And I can tell you.
With the understanding that we are not the lead on this. But we'll be, we're willing to work with whoever the lead is.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think Karina with one of us should be part of this. It looks like, I don't know, just quickly looking through Colleen, scrolling through that, you get to answer yes or no. So it seems like it's, I mean, maybe the first step is just the intake process is to see how, like what this form is. But Karina probably shouldn't be doing it on her own. She should probably be doing it with someone from Select Board or Mark Purple.
So Karina, do you feel that after this agenda item tonight, that we send some type of message to the Select Board? Or we don't? And we just wait to see if somebody else wants to do, do something? And we just wait to see if somebody else wants to do, do something?
Well, it's probably in the Planning Board's best interest, my first thought is that you know, I can draft a letter, and the Planning Board agree, you know, looks at it and agrees to say, look, these are the, these are the things we need to think about, and, you know, we're bringing this to your attention because the Select Board is involved in this initial, at least, form. But here are the conflicts, so we need to decide, the, the town needs to decide how to move forward, something that explains what we just talked about. But showing that the Planning Board you know, is, is, is talking about it, thinking about it, and, you know, is not just letting it pass by unnoticed, you know? It's hard to say, because it is such a huge task and change that the state is pushing on to the communities in relatively short timeframe to make these decisions, and there are costs involved. If you do move forward with doing this, you have to do build-out analyses and et cetera.
So let's, unless somebody wants to volunteer to help Karina with this right now, let select the board members think about it and reach out to Karina tomorrow. I think we're, unless there's some additional info or perspective or opinion, we could move on to the next agenda item.
I'm willing to reach out, Karina, tomorrow. Tomorrow and Wednesday have some blocks of time during my day, so when you, let's just connect offline.
Okay, I'm, I'm back and forth, too. I have several appointments and a couple of things I have to take care of, and then and then Monday's
Importantly, that should be your urgency.
See how I get through the night.
Any questions or comments after this on MBTA Communities?
Just one more thing, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Colleen, that form that you just had, can you do a printout, like a PDF printout on that, and pop that in Dropbox?
I was just gonna email you the link.
Oh, that works.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'm almost done.
You should already have the link, too, in an email from today. We sent out that. You
There it is.
Oh, that's the form. Oh, I thought that was the draft guidelines that leave that link.
Yeah, and there's the form right there. It takes you right to it.
Okay, perfect. I have it.
Okay.
I don't see anything else on the agenda that we didn't cover?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? See Kate smiling? It's not nine o'clock yet. Close. Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing that all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
We'll return, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Karina. Take care of yourself, please.